Being seven o'clock, we'll call the Marathon County Board of Supervisors to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing because that will be followed by a moment of reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have the reading of the notice, please.
The adjourned annual meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of thirty-eight members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse Assembly Room 504 Street, Wausau on Tuesday, December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven p.m. to consider the items as were listed on the agenda, and the agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you. I would like to request everyone, please silence their cellphones and any other electronic devices, or put them on vibrate, as to not interrupt the meeting. Thank you. And we will proceed to roll call. Supervisor Mast, could you confirm, please? Thank you, and we will proceed. And I would like to welcome all the visitors that we have here with us this evening, including the visitors on the viewing audience. So we have a fairly lengthy agenda, so we will move on to item number seven, public comment, not to exceed fifteen minutes, as Madam Clerk has informed me, that nobody has requested to address the board. So we will move on to item B, consent agenda, items eight, nine, and ten. What is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Zerenny, and second by Supervisor Christensen. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Thank you, and we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. And we will move on to item number C, reports. And we are grateful to have with us this evening members of the histori... Historical Society. We have with us Russ Wilson and Rick Lohr, and they're going to give us a presentation on the benefits of the Marathon County Historical Society. So if those two gentlemen would be so grateful.
Good evening, folks. I'm Russ Wilson of the Marathon County Historical Society. Marathon County has contributed sixteen percent of our operating budget this year, and of course, has been a very substantial contributor over the years. So we're here, number one, to say thank you for those dollars. Number two, we want to give you a review of what's gone on in two thousand eighteen, and we think that that will demonstrate that those tax dollars are very well spent. And the other point that we hope that will come through is to show that for folks who might be considering relocating to Marathon County, we are a dynamic place. We're a place that can attract people. We're a place where things can be seen, and done, and learned, where people can serve, and volunteer, and learn. With us tonight, back in the back, we have several folks. Kelly Zagzebski on our board has put together, and as well as Christine Martins and Mary Forer, our executive director, they're back. Raise your hands, folks. Up here is Rick Lohr. Rick, I'm sure many of you know him, but he is our, one of our lecturer and historic reenactors extraordinaire. So just a few facts and figures for you for what we did in two thousand eighteen. So we have really three legs to our stool, and that is, we have exhibits, we have programming, and we have our archives. For exhibits, we're full with our exhibits right now. We have our stories, we have milking time, and we have rural electrification, which happens to be my favorite exhibit. I hope that folks have been to see these. Maybe, could I just see a show of hands if you've seen any of the exhibits there? Excellent, excellent. And if you haven't, then be sure to come over. In terms of programming this year, we served directly, in one way or another, fifteen thousand five hundred people, which represents a thirty-three percent increase over two thousand seventeen. We had a hundred and twenty-five volunteers who have donated over two thousand two hundred hours of their time. So if you stop here and think, okay, somebody may be looking to relocate to this county, but the spouse doesn't have anything to do, we're a place to keep in mind for volunteer activity. We had one thousand six hundred twenty-six folks who did the Yawkey House and Gardens Tour. We've rented out our facilities on a hundred twenty-three occasions. In the Little Red Schoolhouse program, we had one thousand six hundred twelve fourth graders from thirty-eight elementary schools across the county. Of course, we've got our records, and our artifacts, and our photographs by the thousands, but the number that jumps off this screen for me is the free programs and events. We're up to sixty-two free programs or events in two thousand eighteen. It was just, I think it was maybe two thousand thirteen when we hit thirty-five, and I remember saying at a board meeting, oh, my gosh, we're almost up to one of these events a week, and now, you know, look where we are now. We do some things that are unique. We are the official depository for Marathon County. We have this body's records going back to March four, eighteen fifty, and we have the county's probate records going back to eighteen seventy. We've got county highway marriage election records, we have farm journals, we've got the Board of Supervisor records from the Bull Falls Township in eighteen forty-nine, and then, of course, we have the Village of Wausau records, now the City of Wausau. We do company histories. Some of you may remember Murray Machinery, you may remember Hammerblow, you may remember where I began my professional career, at Employer's Insurance of Wausau. We do personal histories, and we have personal artifacts, and our staff assist genealogists, they assist historians, and they assist just plain old, ordinary people like you and me from all over the country. So of our three stools, as great as our exhibits are, as fabulous as our programming is, our treasure really is our archives, because we do have one of the largest, one of the most extensive, if not the largest, collection of records and archives and artifacts of any county historical society in the state, and these are becoming more and more readily accessible every day. For two thousand eighteen programming, I'm not going to read this list, but I will just, I guess I'll say a cliche. I don't really like cliches, but we really have something for everybody. The topics that we cover is absolutely unlimited, and the age range of folks we serve is unlimited. So if you're a nine-year-old girl with an American Girl doll, or you're a ninety-year-old World War II vet, we have something for you. National History Day is a big deal in the schools. In fact, in the Everest District, it's actually part of the curriculum in the eighth grade, and the Historical Society is very much, very actively engaged in that. We do school presentations, and we also do traveling trunks, where our staff get a suitcase or some kind of a trunk, and put together lesson plans, and artifacts and photographs to go along to deliver those to the teachers to give those lessons. A couple of things, again, thinking about something that is attractive to folks. Something fairly new is the Vintage Game Board Nights, which has become wildly popular. We have two versions. We've got a family version for all ages at the Woodson History Center, and we've got an adult version that's held at Limerick's on Scott Street. Wildly popular event. And then also wildly popular is the History Speaks in Your Town lecture series, and with that, I will turn this over to our fabulous lecturer and historic reenactor. Rick?
Thanks, Russ. I'd like to recognize Sandy Seiler is also a member of our board, and thank you for letting us speak to you tonight, and with your financial help, we have become one of the best county historical societies in the state. And we have a great staff, and we have an army of volunteers who are very dedicated, and this is really what's driven the society. Let's see, where are we here? Okay, around the county. We do have a History Speaks in Your Town speaking series, and right now, we've got one coming up in January. It'll be Sarah Rudolph talking about the history of madness and theater, which might be an interesting topic. And then Dwayne Zamzo is going to be in Marathon, talking about Pomeranians in Wisconsin. And then Brett Barker will be in Spencer, a railroad town, and he'll be talking about the driving in the last spike of the Transcontinental Railroad, where one year too late, well, actually three months too late, it should have been last year, but we're going to do it this year. And you're certainly invited to come to those. We're trying to get expert speakers out into the county and have that available for the villages. We were in every village last year, and I think that went over pretty well. As far as around the county, we have the Little Red Schoolhouse program, as it mentions here. I'll let you read through the rest of them, the branch libraries and assisted living facility programs. We do a lot of speaking in assisted living facilities. We have programs in the branch libraries, and what this means is that we are trying to get out to the county and then to appeal to people of all ages, whether young, or you're in the assisted living, a little bit older. We're trying to have programs for all of those. And in recent state historical society conferences, they've been interested in our programs and how we do get out to the county. So we're kind of leading that for the state. Cooperative efforts just means that we work with some of these. I'm certainly not going to read through those, there's a lot of them, but either they come to us for historical perspective, or we work directly with them. In the History Speaks in Your Town, I work with the University Extension very closely, and that happens with a number of other of these. But you can see where the figures that we gave you, there's a secondary group of people that are represented by this list, that are, again, affected by the work of the Marathon County Historical Society. We have award-winning website. The Wisconsin State Historical Society voted our website as the best in the state among the county parties, so take a look at it. You can go through the portal for documents, you can read histories, you can find a lot of information in there, and also historical pictures and photos. And so we have a photo portal as well. And you're really invited to take part in that, and if you weren't doing that last year, you might have missed Amelia Earhart, who's president here in Wausau, although she did show up on the, out in the popular media as well. Social media, we have quite a few followers on Facebook, and we're always highlighting what's coming up, so if you would want to keep up with what we're doing, page into our Facebook page and take a look. What's new and upcoming is the regular stuff that we do, story time, time in the garden in the summer. I remember Wind Club, where people write their memories. It's a creative writing kind of effort. We have the History Speaks in Your Town, and I don't know if you've ever had the experience, but I was looking at some artwork up in the museum, the art museum, and somebody came up to me and said, John, John, I never thought I would get to meet you. When you used to fly over Wausau, you used to wave at me, and I'd see your scarf flying in the breeze. I said, what? And she says, yeah, and then you had flight, and you had, something went wrong with your motor, and you crashed, and, well, you died. Who are you? And that's the way, this happened to me more than once. I've done about ten cemetery tours, and people know you by the reenactment that you did. They don't know you, and so they come up and introduce themselves that way. And that's about the third time that's happened to me. So it's fun to be a part of this process. We are finally, when I go around and I speak, and they say, where are you from? I say, well, the Woodson History Center and the Yawkey House. Oh, I know where that is. That's up the hill. And I said, well, finally, we're not getting that question asked quite as much, we're beginning to identify where we are. But we've been a kind of a hidden, we think, gem for a long time, and we're trying to break out of our shell. So thank you for letting us talk to you tonight.
Is there anybody on the board that has some questions? If you would mind answering a few questions, if you can. Supervisor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question. How many members are there of the Historical Society?
About five hundred.
What, can I ask, what are there, what does it cost to join?
We have various suggested... We have various suggested levels. I think the least expensive, and I'm going to look back there for help, but probably twenty-five dollars is the least expensive, but, you know, we have these names for Pioneer and Lumberjack and that, and it, you know, goes up. Yeah, we'll accept a lot more.
Okay, but you don't have just a, you know, a flat twenty dollars to belong to the, as a member? You know, every month in your newsletter, you have new members and that.
Right.
So you don't have a specific amount that's...
No, that is correct. We don't have a specific...
Okay, and then a follow-up question. If your budget was cut from this board by twenty-five thousand, what would the impact be, if we cut roughly half of what we give you?
Well, we will, that will be on our, I can tell you that is on our agenda in January to begin those discussions, but, I mean, we obviously have to look at what opportunities there that we don't have now, or that we're not using now to try to raise money, and then, obviously, on the other side is, do we have to cut services? But that certainly is going to be on our, be front and center on our agenda. You bet.
Yeah, we have two really big buildings. One is a world-class restoration in the Yawkey House, that if you haven't been through, is a timber baron's house of the Yawkey family, and the building is right back to nineteen fifteen, as accurately as it can be done. And so it is a restoration. The other place is Woodson History Center across the street, where all of our activities take place, and those are sizable places, and so we do have a lot of upkeep, insurance, and those kind of things there, as well as staff.
Okay, any other questions? Supervisor Gomes.
On one of your cards, it said there was a film crew here from Europe. What were they filming?
They were, they were from Vienna, and they were doing, as I understand it, a comparison of another location somewhere on planet Earth that has the same name as Vienna, and in American English, that would be Wien, or in German, Wiener, as in the town of Wien. And if you, if you heard that report of where it was, there was thought to be a gun being brandished, and the Marathon County Sheriff's Department responded, well, that was, I understand, that was the microphone boom from the European filming crew that was out there.
Okay, is there any other questions? Any other questions? Supervisor Miller.
Has there ever been any prisoners from World War I or II stationed in Marathon County, or held here in Marathon County?
Rick, if you don't know that, yeah, I don't know of that.
I knew there have been in various places around the state. My old hometown had quite a few during World War II, German prisoners, so I just thought maybe perhaps...
Sure, you know, that's a great question, but I have never heard of there having been German prisoners here.
Okay, any other questions? Well, if not, again, thank you, Rick, and Russ, and thank you very much for the presentation. We'll move on to item number twelve, update on uniform addressing by Vice Chair McEwen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On our Public Safety Committee meeting last Wednesday, we received an update on the uniform addressing, just kind of a wrap-up as to what was accomplished, and kind of the plan of attack for two thousand and nineteen. We received that update from Dave Mack from CPC, and he's going to come up and give you the same update that he gave Public Safety, which we thought was good for the county board to hear. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Dave Mack from CPC, for those who may not know me, program manager for the department and the program, I guess the program manager for this uniform addressing program that we've got going on in the county. We started this project years ago with action that you take, you took, to embark us on this process of readdressing most of Marathon County. This particular year, we got started approximately three weeks late, based on a freak late snowstorm, but since then, we've been going forward with the installation of the address signs and the new street signs throughout the county. To date, we are complete for this season. We got to the point where we decided that we were not going to be able to finish the whole county before the end of the year, so we took steps to get to a specific place, and then we're going to continue again in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, hopefully before May first, like we did this year. But if you, we sent out postcards to the residents of all of the communities or the municipalities that will not be getting their addresses changed this year. So you've got this in front of you, it was in your packet today as well. But I just wanted to highlight the map that was on here. Everything in orange on the map is the area covered by the installation this particular year. That orange represents approximately three-quarters of the area, or, I'm sorry, about two-thirds of the area of the county, and it also represents fifteen thousand addresses that we've signed and changed this year. So we've got a good share of it done. The white towns that are shown on the map, those are the towns that have not been addressed yet. They will be done next year. About fifty-five hundred are left when we get into doing that next year. The list of all those communities are on the postcard as well, and so tonight, I'm just here to let you know that we are basically on pause mode for this year, to start up again in the spring, whenever the frost goes out again, whenever that might be next spring. I'm really here to answer questions, if anybody's got any. Why did I figure you'd be there?
Supervisor Schaefer, I can't imagine. And I would like to please direct all of the board members to use their Request to Speak button, but go ahead, Supervisor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to let the public know on the board, how many roads have we changed?
Just under seven hundred.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we've got, yeah, it'll be about just over two hundred, or twenty thousand addresses, and just under seven hundred street names are changing.
How are we doing on the cost of this at the time? We estimated what it was going to cost if we did all the addresses, but then there were the street signs, that was kind of the unknown. So are we under budget, or where we think we should be?
Yes. All of the costs of the whole installation, whether it's the address signs themselves or the street signs, all came in underneath that budget of one point two million. So, and we're well under that, because we're still, you know, just two-thirds of the way through the project, so, but at this point, yes, under budget.
Supervisor Gomes.
How much money has been spent trying to make Rib Mountain conform?
I'll refer that to the corp council.
I think about two hundred dollars in filing fees.
Supervisor Miller.
From the town that wouldn't, so what is the status of my town, Rib Mountain, right now?
Well, I can pass it off to you, easy enough. I know the same answer, though.
Right now, right now, that is, that is on hold. The case was taken by the Wisconsin Supreme Court, and we, the parties have filed all their briefs in this case. The Wisconsin Counties Association brought a motion to intervene and to file an amicus brief with the Supreme Court. That brief is due on Friday. We go to oral argument on Valentine's Day. We go to oral argument on Valentine's Day at the State Capitol.
Supervisor Drabek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Say, my question would be, the DOT signs, the road names have not been changed on them, but the roads have been changed. That's causing some confusion for people. Is there some way we can cover those signs up or something, so it's, they're not causing that confusion? Just a question.
Yeah, so, we're working with the DOT and the County Highway Department to get those signs up. The eastern part of the county is, should be done. I think they're all complete by having the new names up. The western side of the county, the north side of the road, those road names have not changed yet as part of this process. Only the southern part of, south of Highway 29 has changed. So, we're really only changing the road names facing, well, the direction, which would be south for those particular names. But if there's an issue out there that we, you think we should be trying to cover up a sign to make it confusing, not confusing, we should be looking at that definitely.
So, I can find my way home.
Turn at the green sign.
Turn at the green sign, right? Supervisor Seiler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Dave, I had a question for constituent regarding when the Google or the other entities or people that now that everyone's become so reliant on the little voice on their phone or their dashboard versus the paper map, it's been quite an issue for folks, I've heard. So, what's the status and all of that, please?
Okay, status is that, first off, those companies are, they're an independent company, that they get to do what they want to do with the information that they hold. So, we have no way to actually get them to do this. But we do have the ability to give them the data that we have, and we have had steps taken place during the course of the year to do just that. There's one particular company that then takes our data and sends it out to other companies, like Garmin, and the companies that install the software in the vehicles, those types of, that company has all of our data, and they're hopefully distributing it to their, their clients that they have. We got contact from Google as well, and they have a specific way in which we can give the data to them, so they can use it in their systems. And they're looking at that right now to decide whether they want to use ours or come back out and do their own work on their own.
Okay, thank you.
But one of the things I can mention that might be helpful to anybody out there, in this process, your old address is still valid for at least a year since we started this project, so, or since you're getting your address installed. So, when it comes to finding the location in like a Garmin or using Google Maps, using the old address will get you to the location.
Okay.
When you get to the location, you'll, you probably could still see a brand-new blue sign there with a different number.
And if I may, Dave, that's one of the causes of confusion, is that, you know, every township seems a little different. Many, as I drive through the county where the signs have been installed, I see both the old and the new, the new sign still up. So, I'm going to have a couple of questions here, so bear with me. So, you know, if you could let us know what actually the communication was with the towns and when those old signs might come out. But one of the areas of concern raised is that for some people, and there are some towns where the old signs are gone, and so, their Google or whoever takes them somewhere, so they're looking for a particular road name, so the device has the old name, but now there's a new sign. So, all, you know, in an effort for consistency, right now, things are really kind of messy. So, I know that's a couple of questions, but can you enlighten me, please?
Sure. Messy is definitely, I guess, part of this project, because we're marching across the county in the installation phase and now putting it on pause for six months or so. We're going to have locations where, like you said, the, the, all of the new stuff is out there, and these, these softwares that are out there that people are using have not come, you know, up to speed with our data that we've been giving all of them. We don't have a whole lot of control over that, unfortunately. It's, they have the means and the ability to do what they need to with their own product. And so, we just have to go through our process, which is changing the addresses as we go along. But for your first question, as part of the process, all the towns have been notified before the installation company comes into the community and sets up a process where we actually, in the, in the notice that we send to the property owners, let them know that if they'd like to keep their old sign, they can do that. And so, there's a lot of people that have chosen to do that, keep their sign, both of their signs in place on their properties, so that they have that old-new combination there, just in case somebody like UPS or FedEx is delivering something, they can find that location with either of those, those signs that are there. The other thing that we've done is that we've created a really nice tool on our website, where you can just go right to the front page of our website, and you, you can actually type in the old address, and it'll show you the new, or type in the new, and it'll show you the old. And we've got a lot of companies that are now calling us and talking to us about using this tool, even for their delivery drivers and people that are, you know, have access on their phones to this tool. They can do the conversions really fast to find that, that location, to get the right sign, depending on, if they show up looking for the old sign and they see the new sign there, they can do that quick conversion and verify that they're at the right location. So, there's, there's tools out there. So, we're just, hopefully, we'll be able to get some more information like that out to the, to the public when they, when we start up again in the spring.
Supervisor Boots.
First of all, thank you for the sign.
You got one?
I got one. So, I don't have an old address, so that'll be an issue with Google, obviously. I know you can't do anything with that. But I guess the second question I had was, what do you foresee coming up as issues? I know we had problems with the contractors, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, we hear the negative, not the positive of the new addressing system. So, do you see anything coming more? It seems like our township has kind of calmed down now after the first initial shock, but do you see any other issues coming up, I guess, down the road?
The biggest issue that we've seen, even as we've gone through this whole process, is, is a situation that we ended up having to put in a little flyer into the envelope that gets your official notice, notifying people that they need to be a little bit cautious of going out and just changing their address right away the day they see that sign going in the ground. What happens at the, the system, the way the process works is that we change the address. We send that information to the, to the post office, U.S. Postal Service. They make the change officially in their database. We then send it to the Sheriff's Department to put into our 911 system, so that all three now are working together with the same data sets. And what we're, I lost my train of thought there. So, in that process, there are people, companies, that actually acquire the data sets from the post office. We call them the third-party vendors. They're the ones that sell address information to other companies. A good example is probably a large credit card company out there gets the data from a third-party source. They don't get it directly from the post office. And so, these third-party vendors have, by federal statute, they have to make changes to their data sets every 90 days, or they have to update those. And so, they're, by, by statute, they, they're changing their addresses all the time. So, if you change your, if you get a new sign in the ground and you go to make your change with your new address, and you tell your credit card company that this is your new address, they may tell you it's not verifiable by the postal service, because that third-party vendor hasn't updated their data set yet. And so, we've come into a little bit of a confusion situation where people are having problems with some of their address changes. And so, we're letting people know that it's probably wise to just hold back for a little bit. And if you wait a few weeks or so, nothing's changing with all of your information, because your, your mail's coming to your old address still. Everything that you have is still working with your old address. So, to slowly change it into your new address is a, is a good way to go. And then you'll, hopefully, you'll catch the times when those third-party vendors are updating all of the business's data sets with our address. So, that's still the problem I see, foresee in the future, is once we get done with this whole project, we'll still have a little lag where there might be some people that are struggling with getting things squared away with their, their address changes. But after that's done, I think we, I really don't see any issues at all. I think we're going to start to hear a lot more from the citizens about how, how beneficial this is, and that how easy it is to use once, once they get their things changed, all their data changed, so.
Okay, any other questions for Dave? If not, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Moving on, item number D, number 13, life and public service of Dennis M. Weeks. Clerk, would please read the memorial.
Dennis M. Weeks, 72, died Monday, November 5, 2018, Atheta Care Medical Center in Maupaca. Private graveside services were held at the Abbotsford Public Cemetery with military honors provided by the Colby VFW Post Number 2227. Dennis was a member of the Marathon County Board from 2000 to 2006. He served on the Forestry, Recreation, and Zoning Committee, as well as the Health Board during that time. Dennis was clerk for the Village of Edgar from March 1994 to August 2008, and he served as the Abbotsford Clerk prior that time. Dennis Weeks is hereby honored and remembered for his faithful public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, that they enter this memorial and its proceedings of the board out of respect for the memory of Dennis M. Weeks. A copy of this memorial shall be sent to his family with the sympathies of the board, dated this 18th day of December 2018.
Motion by Supervisor Langenhahn, and second by Supervisor Gomes. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote as soon as the clerk authorizes you to, but please wait until voting is authorized. All right, please proceed. Supervisor Trumeling, please confirm, and we'll proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously. Out of respect, and for Dennis Weeks' service, please stand, and we will observe a moment of silence. And we will move on to item number E, appointments, number 14, Wisconsin Valley Library Service Board of Trustees.
I, Kurt Gibbs, Marathon County Board Chair, do hereby, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, reappoint the following individuals to the Wisconsin Valley Library Service Board of Trustees for three-year terms to expire December 31, 2021. Michael Otten, Wassa, a reappointment. Sonia Ackerman, Wassa, a reappointment. Further, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, I appoint Carrie Sweeney, Wassa, to the Wisconsin Valley Library Service Board to complete a term expiring December 31, 2019, replacing Katie Rosenberg. Per diem and mileage expense reimbursement will not be paid for meeting attendance, dated this 18th day of December 2018. Should that be 2018? Okay. Second.
Supervisor Rosenberg with the motion, and Supervisor Seiler with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
And we will proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously.
Item number 15, Veteran Service Commission.
Can I type this in first? I, Brad Carker, Marathon County Administrator, do hereby, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, reappoint Bernie Garkey Weston to the West, to the Veteran Service Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021. An annual salary of $100 shall be paid, and mileage reimbursement is allowed paid upon request.
And we have Supervisor Voll with the motion, and Supervisor Stark with the second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to number 17, we have the North Central Community Services Program Board, item number 17.
Did you miss one?
Excuse me, Civil Service Commission. Civil Service Commission. What is your pleasure? Excuse me, clerk is going to read.
I, Brad Carker, Marathon County Administrator, do hereby, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, reappoint Anne Worth, Wassa, to the Civil Service Commission for a five-year term to expire December 31, 2023. Each member of the commission receives an annual payment of $200, according to state statute, and mileage expense reimbursement is allowed for meeting attendance.
We have Supervisor Wagner, and we have Supervisor Budke with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we will proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously. And now, we will go to the North Central Community Services Program Board.
I, Brad Carker, Marathon County Administrator, do hereby, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, appoint the following individuals to the North Central Community Service Program Board for three-year terms to expire December 31, 2021. Randy Balk, Rothschilds, reappointment. Captain Ben Bliven, Wassa PD, reappointment. Teresa Whitstone, Wassa, reappointment. And Supervisor Jeff Sorene, reappointment. Per diem and mileage expense reimbursement will be paid to eligible members of the board.
We have a motion by Supervisor Kelbach, and we have Supervisor Drabek with the second. Any discussion on those appointments? Supervisor McEwen.
If you need to point out, it's, it's not Captain Bliven's, it would be Chief Bliven's. Oh, you did? Okay.
We've got it corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Thank you, and we will proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously. And now, we move on to number 18, the Board of Health.
I, Brad Carker, Marathon County Administrator, do hereby, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, reappoint the following individuals to the Board of Health for five-year terms to expire December 31, 2023. Dean Danner, Wassa, and Dr. Lori Shepherd from Wassa. Per diem and mileage expense reimburse, reimbursement is allowed paid upon request.
Supervisor Nutting, and Supervisor Schaefer with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried unanimously. We're getting better at this. We will move on to number 19, the Public Library Board.
I, Brad Carker, Marathon County Administrator, do hereby, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, appoint Sarah Thurs, Wassa, to the Marathon County Public Library Board to complete a term to expire December 31, 2020, replacing Allison Morrell. Further, upon approval of the Board of Supervisors, I reappoint the following individuals to the Marathon County Public Library Board for three-year terms to expire December 31, 2021. Supervisor Katie Rosenberg, Wassa, Carrie Sweeney, Wassa, and Scott Winch, Stratford. Per diem and mileage expense reimbursement will be paid for meeting attendance, to be paid from the library budgeted funds.
Okay, we have Supervisor Schaefer. Okay, we have Supervisor Schaefer and Supervisor Fifryk with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, we'll move on to item number F, Ordinances. Number twenty, Ordinance Amending General Code of Ordinances for Marathon County, Chapter twenty-one, Non-Metallic Mining Reclamation Code, Ordinance thirty-three dash eighteen. What is your pleasure? We have Supervisor Christiansen with the motion and Supervisor Drebeck with the second. Supervisor Rosenberg.
Yeah, I was hoping that someone could just give a brief overview of what the changes are.
We have the, at least the, Department Head, Paul Dagel here, who will provide the information on the update. I just gave you a promotion.
Not a department head, but I certainly will speak in Becky's behalf, and I am the Land and Water Program Director for the Conservation Planning and Zoning, so really this is two things that we're doing. The one is, we're trying to take all of our fees out of our ordinances so that they don't have to come to a county board if the Environmental Resources Committee chooses to change fees at any time. And so that's one of the changes that you see in the ordinance. And then the other one really is because the state law changed governing when non-metallic mines are within five hundred feet of rivers and streams, that they have that authority to regulate and reclaim those non-metallic mines that are in that area. So we're really taking those sections out of the ordinance. So these are minor changes, much less controversial than our metallic mining ordinance that came before you, but nonetheless important and for our staff to carry out their duties.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is very simple. So the fee structure is not being eliminated, it's just being relocated to a different location?
Exactly, and actually, we need by state law to charge a hundred percent of our cost to do all the metallic, non-metallic mining reclamation in the county administrative duties that carry that out. So our committee's taken a look at that and actually increased the fees slightly for two thousand nineteen to cover all of our costs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other questions? Well, thank you, Paul. And we will then proceed to vote on ordinance thirty-three dash eighteen. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Item under, ordinance under F twenty-one, Town of Easton Rezone, Tim Veerland, on behalf of the Colby Construction, Ordinance thirty-four dash eighteen. What is your pleasure? Supervisor Sly with the motion and Supervisor Fifryk with the second. Any discussion on that ordinance? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving to Resolutions, under number G, Transportation Coordinating Committee and Health and Human Services Committee, item twenty-two, two thousand nineteen elderly and disabled transportation, also known as eighty-five point two-one, application, resolution fifty-eight dash eighteen. Supervisors Rennie with the motion and Supervisor Rosenberg with the second. Any discussion? Supervisor Schaefer.
On page sixty-four, if you're looking on a computer, which I am tonight, the total expense for this program is seven hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred and eight dollars, and passenger revenue is nine thousand one hundred and eighty. Is that? Is that correct? I mean, we charge for these rides, do we not?
The, we have Dave Mack, who is in charge of the Transportation Coordinating Committee, and he will answer those questions for you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we do. I want to get back to that page where you were. I'm using paper tonight, Mr. Schaefer.
I used to use that.
But I heard.
Wow.
And just to answer your question, Jim, yes, there is, there is a cost share involved with this, and you know, and looking at this, this, it's interesting because I'm looking at it saying that there should be a passenger revenue number in the North Central Healthcare column that we do, we do charge a co-share, a co-pay for passengers in that, in that column. So I'll have to make sure that that gets fixed. We do have that, that cost share with the Metro Ride Program as part of this program. That's the nine thousand that you see. So there should be a number in there.
Supervisor Schaefer.
There is a number in there, ninety-one eighty. Is that our total revenue? I mean, per-
No, no, there should be a number where the zero is for passenger revenue under the North Central column. Yes, and that's-
Oh, okay, all right, so it's going to bring it up somewhat, anyway.
Or that it's already in there, that it's not listed spread out, basically, but the program, overall program, is that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the overall program.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gums.
Oh, I can't find it now, but I read somewhere that we're getting cameras? Cameras on the-
Yeah, as, as part of our, if we have any money left in the, in the grant that we don't spend in a year, we get, we get to put that in a trust fund and keep that money. We're looking to spend down that trust fund money that we have now, and then one of the options that we have, that we're looking at this year for two thousand nineteen, is to spend that money on security cameras in the vehicles that are housed with the North Central Healthcare Group.
Is the security?
Supervisor Gums, go ahead.
Is the security for the people or for the drivers?
Both, actually. It's, it's to document any incident that might happen, either in the vehicle or outside the vehicle. So if there's anything that happens out there, we will have a record of it.
Big Brother's looking. Supervisor Crowsey.
Thank you. I have a question. I was just wondering what kind of elderly and disabled this is being used by, is it nursing home residents, elderly care centers, group homes, people in North Central Healthcare? Who utilizes these services?
Most of the people that use the service are not from those entities. Most of those entities have their own transportation services that they use, and most of that is being funded through the Medicare program. These are individuals in the community that just don't have transportation means, that are over sixty years old, and that have a disability. So it's-
That's a Medicaid program, then? To the Medicaid program?
No, this is a not, not, a non-Midicaid funded program. That's, it's a supplement to the Medicaid. If you, if you have the ability to use Medicaid, you have to use that. If you don't have that, then you can use our program through the county.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other questions? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number H, Forestry, Recreation Committee, Marathon County Park Commission, Environmental Resource Committee and Human Resources and Finance and Property Committee. Item number twenty-three, Acceptance of a Land Donation from the Wassa and Marathon County Parks Foundation, Inc., Resolution Fifty-nine dash eighteen. Supervisor Fifryk, and we have Supervisor Seefeld with the second. And I would invite the Parks Director, Jamie Polly, up to give us a brief explanation and introduce some folks about the donation of this land.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm honored to be here tonight to hopefully have you accept this land donation from the Parks Foundation. It is eighty acres. In the Town of Easton, it is a piece of land that the Parks Foundation has had in their possession for twenty, or since nineteen eighty-six. They had been working to try to do some timber sales on it to improve it. It is bisected by the Big Sandy Creek, and that has posed some challenges for doing the complete timber sale. There was a timber sale on the front half. But the foundation is trying to re-establish themselves as a five oh one C three and cannot hold on to an asset like this, and it has been in their plans to donate it to the county. So now they're moving forward with that. We have talked to the property owner that did donate it to the foundation in the first place. It is in your packet that they've approved this transfer from the foundation to the county as long as we keep it for, open to the public. So we will be putting it into a special county forest use, which will allow it to be used for hiking, biking, hunting, public use that we will put on our plans to improve in the future. And we do have two members of the Park Foundation here tonight that wanted to present this to you for your acceptance, Kelly and Joe, from our foundation. So, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Nutting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wanting to ask if our, if the maintenance of this land was going to continue being underwritten by forestry management? And what, what type of efforts does that involve? And do you contract that out, et cetera? Or is that through a county, county works, county personnel? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Nutting, it is going to be under our department. We, right now, aren't doing any maintenance on that property as it stands, but we will keep an eye on it. We will put it into our park plans to develop, if we can, get a timber sale out there to complete on the back half of it, we will. It will depend on getting across that creek. And then hopefully the revenues of that timber sale, like the foundation had planned, will pay for the trails that we'll put on it in a parking area. Those were the amenities they wanted to add.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously, and I want to thank the foundation for that donation, and generous as it is. Moving on to item number I, Forestry, Recreation Committee, Environmental Resources Committee and the Human Resources Finance and Property Committee, item number twenty-four, Approving an Application to Acquire State Grant Funding Through the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant Program, Number One, Resolution Sixty dash eighteen. We have Supervisor Boots with the motion and Supervisor Sly with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried, but not unanimous. Moving on to, excuse me, moving on to item number twenty-five, Approving an Application to Acquire State Grant Funding Through the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant Program, Number Two, Resolution Sixty-one dash eighteen. We have Supervisor Budke with the motion and Supervisor Seefeld with the second. Any discussion on this one? Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried and also not unanimous. Moving on to item number J, Forestry, Recreation Committee and Environmental Resources Committee, item number twenty-six, To Approve the Annual County Forest Work Plan, Resolution Sixty-two dash eighteen. We have Supervisor Wagner and Supervisor Drebeck with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Gums.
I have a question. Does the work plan allow private, or citizens of the county to clean up a wood that's down for their own use at all? I see the man is here, could he talk to that?
We have the forester here, so he will be glad to answer your question if he can.
So, yes, we do have firewood permits that you can get following a timber sale. All you need to do is contact us, it's a thirty-dollar permit for up to ninety days. But one of the things that's a little bit different with the permit, we don't allow you to go back and off the trails with a tractor or an ATV or windshield or stuff. It's kind of like, if you want it, you got to work for it. So, but it's thirty dollars to clean up the wood, and some, sometimes the wood is really accessible and you can get two, three pickup loads in a couple hours, so it's, it's a pretty good deal.
Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Gill and Supervisor Bystrom, please. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. From, again, item J, Forestry, Recreational Committee and the Environmental Resources Committee, item number twenty-seven, Application for County Forest Acreage Share Loan Payment, Resolution Sixty-three dash eighteen. We have Supervisor Nutting with the motion and Supervisor Sly with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Supervisors Rennie, I, please vote and confirm. Thank you, and we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Moving on to item K, Finance, Property and Facilities Committee, item number twenty-eight, A Resolution Amending the two thousand eighteen capital improvement budget and the two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-two capital improvement program to fund county Highway Z bridge replacement over the Eau Claire River, Resolution Sixty-four dash eighteen. This is a budget amendment. This does require two-thirds majority of the board. Supervisor Stark with the motion and Supervisor Budke with the second. Any discussion? Supervisor Sly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could somebody on Infrastructure answer this one, or is that bridge planned to be done on Highway Z?
Anybody from the Infrastructure Committee want to care to-
Supervisor Gums, Mr. Vice Chair.
I think it was next year, but that's part, the part of the problem is the government putting a number on the, the cost, and then if there's a cost overrun, it's not split, eighty, twenty, no more, it's all on us. It's all on us. But I don't have the year for sure.
Yeah, because I know it was scheduled for this coming year, and the jungle drums out there. People are saying it's supposed to start right after the first of the year. And I was trying to get ahold of Greaseback and went to do it to find out if, you know, what the schedule is. And I was just wondering. Thank you.
The Finance Director has a little bit of information that she'd love to share with us.
Design phase of budget was for this year with the construction scheduled for next year. Problem was with the cost overrun. We were able to put it back into this year's CIP so that we can get the contracts going and ready to go. And hopefully, we'll have that bridge done by end of next year.
Okay, by the end of next year. Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Again, this does require two-thirds majority vote, and we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is unanimous, and that is two-thirds. And we will move on to Human Resources Finance and Property Committee. Item L, number twenty-nine. Approved two thousand eighteen budget transfers for Marathon County Department of Appropriations. Resolution sixty-five dash eighteen. This is budget amendments and also requires two-thirds majority vote. Supervisor Christensen with the motion and Supervisor Stark with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Again, from Human Resources Finance and Property Committee. Item number thirty. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with Langley County to provide legal services for Chapter fifty-four and Chapter fifty-five cases and expansion of a part-time Assistant Corp Counsel to full-time position and reclassify a vacant position of the Assistant Corp Counsel to paralegal. Resolution sixty-six dash eighteen. We have Supervisor Trammeling with the motion and Supervisor Zerenny with the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Item M from Infrastructure Committee. Number thirty-one. Amending Marathon County Metropolitan Planning Commission. Resolution sixty-seven dash eighteen. Supervisor Piffrick with the motion. Is there a second? Supervisor Schaefer with the second. Any discussion on the item? Amending the bylaws of the MPO. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. Item number N thirty-two. Public Safety Committee. Resolution to support increased compensation for Defense Counsel. Resolution sixty-eight dash eighteen. And we have Supervisor Johnson with the motion and Supervisor Kelbach with the second. Any discussion on that item? Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. And we will proceed. And the motion is carried unanimously. We are down to item O. Miscellaneous Business Announcements and/or Requests. We do have one announcement from the clerk. Before you today, you should have had a sheet that asks you to re-verify your contact information, address, phone number, especially if you live in a rural municipality where the address has changed. But also to reconfirm the mileage to the courthouse, to your home, so that there's been several variations, and we want to make sure we have the right accurate number. And then we need announce, and the clerk has one other announcement.
And there's also a note on the bottom of some of the sheets that your insurance certification needs to be updated. It's only on the one, we made a notation on the bottom of those that have to turn it in.
So if you've got a note on the bottom that says that you need to update your insurance, you need to provide that insurance to the clerk so that the insurance can be verified. Because without any insurance, there's no reimbursement. And as long as you have the higher thresholds, you'll be reimbursed the higher reimbursement mileage rate. And so the clerk asked one additional announcement for signatures.
Transportation Coordinating Committee, Health and Human Services Committee, Park Commission, Environmental Resources, HR, Finance, Property, Forest Recreation, Infrastructure, County Board Members, Public Safety, and Kurt.
And me. Okay, any other announcements? The one announcement that I have to everyone and including our viewing audience is I wish everyone a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas and a New Year, and look forward to working with each and every one of you in two thousand nineteen. Any other announcements? Seeing none, I will take the next emotion. And we have Supervisor Drebeck and Supervisor Sly with the motion, second to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Merry Christmas to all.